Welcome back.
It's nice.
Don't go in winter.
Oh, don't. Freezing cold. Oh, wow.
We ready, gang?
We're not gonna go by nine o'clock.
Hello, how are you? Hello?
Chris, you ready? Hold on. You're good? Hey, good afternoon and welcome to deliberative meeting for City of Chester for August 11th, 2025. Present today is all of council and solicitor. Solicitor, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council, members of the public, members of the administration. Welcome to the Monday, August 11th, 2025 deliberative meeting for the City of Chester. There are no ordinances. The following resolutions will be before council for final passage. Resolution 89, authorize the installation of handicap parking zones in the one, period, 1,100 block of Keystone Road. Two, period, 300 block of Parker Street. Three, period, 2,500 block of West 9th Street. Four, period, 2,900 block of West 9th Street. Five, period, 1,300 block of Vaughn Lane Street. Six, 300 block of East 20th Street. Seven, 500 block of Wilson Street. Eight, 2,600 block of McCary Street. And the nine, period, 2,000 block of Upland Street. Resolution 90, authorize amendment of the original agreement scope of work to withdrawal of 531-533 Avenue of the States for a $95,060 and 80 cent reduction from the original amount of $237,946.19 for a new project amount of $142,885.39. Resolution 91, authorize entering into a transportation alternative set aside program reimbursement grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the Norris Street Trail and Streetscape Improvement Project. Resolution 92, authorize entering into an agreement with Consolidated Rail Corporation, Conrail, for the installation of a multi-use trail along Norris Street between Second Street and the Chester Riverfront Trail, which requires construction that crosses the Conrail freight line. 93, authorize the submission of a grant application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the Lead Hazard Reduction Grant Program to improve the health outcomes for children in the City of Chester by assessing homes for lead risks and remediating lead hazards in an amount not to exceed $4,400,000 with a 10% grant match. Resolution 94, authorize approval of the Silvercare Senior Housing Preliminary Final Land Development Plan for a two-phase development of a senior assisted living facility at 2,500 West 9th Street. Resolution 95, authorize approval of the Liberty Housing Development Corporation Preliminary Final Land Development Plan to consolidate eight lots into one lot for a mixed-use development to construct a one-story office building, six accessible and affordable residential dwelling units, and off-street parking lot at 1,100, 1130 Morton Avenue. Resolution 96, authorize approval of the 742 West Front Street LLC Preliminary Final Land Development Plan to consolidate 14 lots into one lot for a mixed-use development consisting of a 57,695 square-foot warehouse, 7,000 square feet office space, and off-street parking at 742 West Front Street. That would conclude the list.
Okay, thank you. Because we anticipated there may be some questions on those last three, or 94 through 96, we've invited the great Paul Fritz to give us a overview.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm gonna see it on my computer just so I can read it. But I wanted to do one more, one thing before I explain the projects to you. And that is that, working with the city solicitor Ken, Kyle, and Janelle, we've updated how we're doing the resolutions for our subdivision and land development project. If you remember, we used to have these one paragraph descriptions that really didn't have much detail to them, did not have much support to them legally. So what we're doing is, as you see in your packets, doing more in-depth resolution for each project. And they include attachments which describe in detail the conditions and the waivers that we are requesting with these projects. And I can get into that a little bit, what that entails. But I just want to make sure you're aware that we're changing how we're gonna do these resolutions going forward, which benefits the city. It also benefits our planning department in the sense that we were able to track these things more adequately, especially if Kim and I are not around. Someone with a legal basis or someone else running the department will be able to pick up these resolutions and understand what needs to be done to get them built, to get these projects completed. And all this obviously falls in order with the municipal planning code as well. So, in the end, you'll see longer, more detailed resolutions for our subdivision and land development projects. And I'm happy to take any questions on that before I get into...
That doesn't mean our clerk has to read the whole thing.
Yes.
Just, in my opinion, I think we should be explained a little bit more because I'm gonna move you ahead.
Yep.
And one of those attachments is waivers. And if everybody's agreeing on it, that means the waivers too. So I don't know if they had a chance to look at all of those things just to understand that. But in my opinion, I need a little bit more explanation of it being given if I'm moving to the top.
That's a good lead-in to what I want to do, because what I want to do going forward, if it's okay with you, is when we have subdivision land development projects, provide an overview of the project and talk more detail about what the conditions and waiver requests are, which again are in the attachments and what Candace had mentioned. So going forward, if you're okay with that, I'll spend less than five minutes each on each project, but of course, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. But that's what we would do. Ideally, in the deliberative meeting, if you would like me to do it. In the public meeting on Wednesday, I'm happy to do that as well, going forward. But we can talk about that later. So let me get right into it. The first project is the Silvercare Senior Housing Project. So there's three of them, as we know. This project is a 94-unit multifamily apartment building. It's actually a two-phase project. They're gonna build half the apartments on a first phase, and then when they get funding for their second phase, which they're very confident they will get, they will complete the remaining units. There are some site improvements, but it's well-contained in the building that I'll show you photos of in a moment. Projects in the C2R, that's the Commercial Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Here's a photo of the one building that they're gonna be working on. It's the one in the middle, just behind the fence, not the building, the two-story building on the right, just the four-story building in the background. This is where the 94 units will go. This is looking from West 10th Street, looking southwest. This is in the site of where the project is. This is looking northwest. This is looking east. And then this is looking roughly southeast at that one building that will be redeveloped. And we do believe this is a really great reuse of this site to turn it into residential units as the demand for senior housing rises, as we, as we know. And I think this is one last image of the building from West 10th Street looking east. Here is the site plan. And what I'd like to do is just point out, if I can, where the phases will occur. So again, the building is in here. Oh, you're not gonna see it. You're not seeing my cursor. Let me see if I can...
Mr. Fritz, while you're looking for that, I have a quick question. Is there any language in this current mock-up of this project that speaks, that speaks specifically to, I guess, how the maintenance and the property will be maintained going forward?
Yeah, that's a good question. And that is really in all the land development agreements that we put together. There's really three agreements that end up being part of this after it's been approved by council. There's the stormwater management approval, or agreement, excuse me. There's a land development agreement, and that land development agreement is for any public improvements. So that's street curbs, paving, street trees, et cetera. Stormwater's for, stormwater onsite. And then the third one is just a financial agreement to back up the finances for those public improvements. So yes, there is some detail on how the site should be maintained, especially for the stormwater, which is a key aspect of all our projects.
You, you mentioned that it's gonna be two phases.
Yep.
Do we know how long the project is gonna take from start to finish? And how will the availability of the units be advertised to the community?
I can sort of speak to the first question in the sense that I know they want to can start redevelopment as soon as possible. And they do have the funding for the first phase. So I'm assuming, once they get everything to meet these plans requirements for recording, they will be putting it out to bed as soon as possible. The, the second phase, I think, is dependent on funding and the timing related to that. So that's probably a year or two out. But it's a good question, because when we approve this project, if we approve it, it's for both phases. It's for the complete, completion of the project.
And so do we know how it will be advertised?
I can't speak for what the applicant's gonna do for advertising. I'm sure they have, like, a marketing scheme to make this happen. We don't necessarily get into that as far as, like, how things will be marketed for the planning commission responsibilities, but...
The planning department did ask that question whether they were going to focus on the seniors in City of Chester, and they said yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
And what are these units gonna look like? It's in a hospital.
Yeah.
Hospital setting.
Yep.
You know, what is this gonna look like? Is it gonna look like a nice residential area for seniors? Or is it gonna be clinical?
I mean, I think that's a valid question. My understanding is they're gonna have the, the appeal of a regular apartment complex. I mean, they're working with a hospital infrastructure, but they will be turning the rooms into an apartment-friendly, you know, bathroom, kitchen, usual apartment amenities. Will it look clinical? I'm not exactly sure, but again, they're working with the current infrastructure to make it attractive to, to residents. So, there's probably some limitations on that, but we'll see with the marketing, how they market them.
And it's, a portion of the building is still gonna be assist, will have individual living quarters, but then assisted living also?
It's mostly assisted living. I think there are some, and there's levels of assisted too, because some people have some disabilities that need, you know, wider doors, you know, more universal access, et cetera. So there's a number of those apartments, but some will have limited assistance, if that makes sense. Yeah. But it's geared towards seniors, 62 and older.
So will it be one unit or two, two-bedroom unit?
It's a mix. I believe it's a mix, if I'm correct on that.
My concern, my concern is going forward, just how the property will look 10 years from now.
Yeah.
The goal is for, you know, the progress to continue, and we don't need another Palmer House or another residence that we have stents and towers that we have seniors living in that is in deplorable conditions now. So we're, this project would be lovely, but 90 units in this space that we're having, if it's not, you know, well-managed and taken care of, that can spiral downhill pretty quickly.
Yeah, and that probably gets to your original question about the maintenance part of it. But I, I think part of it is making sure that public improvements are done, whether there are street trees and sidewalks. That's part of the improvement process. It is a perfect reuse of this building, because, as you know, this building's been vacant for a long time. Converting a hospital and built facility to residence makes sense from a planning perspective. Of course, we're always worried about maintenance of any project that happens in the city. So we'll do our due diligence through licenses and inspections to make sure that the upkeep is there.
We're talking 96 units total, but Phase 1 is 43?
Something like that. It's roughly half of the units, right. 94. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. It's basically half the building. They're gonna just wall off the building until they get the funding and do the, the second half. That was my understanding. So all the way up, but halfway through, yeah.
Are they still gonna have the urgent care and...
Yeah, good question. That all still remains. And actually, they're hoping to have more amenities on-site as this development occurs, because they'll have more population and demand for services and amenities. So yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, that will remain open. And as you know, they have, they have a lot of parking, so there may be other future development down the line on that property as well.
The whole point of this development is to have housing, assisted living housing on a campus where they can serve them with recreation, adult daycare, healthcare. They've got the restaurant and kitchen area there, so it's a, a place where seniors can get all their services all in, in one space.
The whole A to Z.
I don't know how many letters they're gonna include, but they do look to be able to provide seniors with primarily good living spaces, medical support, and then all the other things that seniors would prefer to have and not have to travel for. One of the things that they've asked for a couple of years ago would be a safe way to get across the street to the memorial park and to have a walking path that they can also enjoy. So we'll, we'll see how this comes along and see if we can accommodate that.
Well, hopefully with the location that, oh, never mind. Does, does someone plan to do something with that? Is it Walgreens, CVS, or what?
Not that I'm aware of yet. Not yet, yeah, that I'm aware of, yeah.
With that location in a senior building, I don't know.
Yeah, could create some demand.
Hopefully somebody develops that area.
Right, right. Yep, that's a good point. I think it's important, and this is for Candace's sake, because there's a large, there's a long attachment to this that she's not going to read, but within this attachment, and there's attachments for all these three projects, is the conditions, which include what we usually include, the, you gotta comply with the city engineer's last review letter and dot your i's and cross your t's. But there's also waiver requests, and this has not been, as far as I know, in previous resolutions. It may have been. But there's typically, in most instances, there's some kind of waiver request from subdivisional land development organ, ordinance for certain aspects in that ordinance that may be just too strict for compliance. So for instance, in this project, there's six waivers, and they're on the last part of the attachment. I'm not gonna go into too detail, but the first one is a waiver from a preliminary plan, and so, because this is, is a combined preliminary final land development plan. This is a typical thing that we see, because most developers would like to do a preliminary final at the same time. And just so you know, we're, we see this, and this is, actually goes back in time always before AutoCAD and things like this. Preliminary plans were supposed to catch things before a plan went too far. But now, so many things, digital, developers just wanna get the final plan in and get it reviewed. Even though there can be, it can be an interim process, they wanna get through the final plan. We're trying to get through that process with developers by requiring a sketch plan, which is an informal review. So we're actually looking at this, these plans at two stages, and we've done that with most of our plans recently. So that's a typical waiver. It's not a big deal. The second one is a, is a waiver for a traffic impact study. We, as the city, reviewed it and said that the demand and the expected demand, traffic demand didn't warrant a traffic impact study. It's a good point, because there's a certain level for projects that do require a traffic impact study, and that's maybe usually like 500 or more daily to and from the site. What happens with these waivers is the land developer applicant and their city engineer, or their engineer, make a request to waive, and then they provide backup on why they do not need something in the, in the sale, though. So for the traffic impact, their engineer proved to us that they did not meet the requirements or the need for a traffic impact study based on the population that will be using this site. So from the city engineer's point of view, they're willing to recommend a waiver for that requirement.
But because of the population that's gonna be using that site, it seems like to me, we, you know, I'm not, I don't have an expertise in this area, but it does seem like to me that we would waive something like that.
Well, if you think about it, though, it's a, it's 62 years and older, this is the population. So it's 94 units. You would think if it was a regular apartment complex, we probably would require a traffic impact study. But the applicant has, has given us enough evidence to indicate that not all the residents of that dwelling place will have cars. So they've actually limited their parking and their need for, the need for parking for all the residents. So that's why they requested that, and we did feel that that was warranted, acceptable.
And then I would imagine if some, if this is going to be, a lot of them will be assisted living, they, they'll be driven around or, you know...
Or shuttled, yep.
Shuttle, or the SEPTA, or, you know, those community transit will be coming, maybe picking them up. I'm not sure if they'll actually be driving.
Yep, and that was, that was the point of view that we took from the city engineer's perspective.
Could you explain the partial waiver? What does that look like? What is, because it's of number four, so there's a partial waiver from Section 1310.
And that's why I have the cursor up here, because that's a good question. So the partial waiver is to only replace the curbing from where my cursor is on the west to the east side here on West 10th Street. If you go back to the size of the site of the project on this map, it's quite large. So we were willing to waive the need for new curbing along that parking lot that's further to the east and outside the project boundaries, and even to the west here on West 10th Street.
I don't know, Mr. Fritz, the mayor talks about curbs in Chester a lot. We might need some new curbs.
We're in agreement with that, and we feel that if there's new proposed development in this area, we would ask for that certainly. But there are financial constraints with this project. It is publicly funded. And we did think, in all fairness, it was okay to just request the, the curbing that's adjacent to the project site, which it seems to make sense to us, which is really, I would say, a full city block of new curbing. And that actually brings up a point that, just so there's clarity too, that the curbing for this project is being deferred until the second phase, because they did not have funding to do curbing. So what would be important to recognize in this project is that the applicant came in, didn't think they had to do any public improvements, because they were just continuing the building. We explained to them that they actually do have to do public improvements, because they're adjacent to a public street, have access from a public street. And we negotiated with them to get that new curbing and sidewalks along West 10th Street within that frontage. So just as you know, going through the planning process, there is some pull and tugging to make sure that they are in alignment with, is in the needs of the city. But we thought there was a good compromise to at least get the frontage improved for this project site. It's one of the largest parcels in the city, to be honest with you. And let's hope that down future, down the line, there will be some redevelopment elsewhere on that site.
On number six, what is the steam-baked erosion requirements? Like, where can we find that information?
Yeah, I, I read that, and it, it's confusing. All you really need to know on that is it's, it's management of stormwater and how it is controlled as far as quality and runoff volume from the site. It has nothing necessarily to do with streambank erosion, but obviously all quality and volume affects streambanks. With this project, the applicant is actually reducing the impervious surface coverage by a minimal amount, but they are reducing it. So they're just asking that this part of the ordinance be waived, because they're actually meeting, they're actually improving the site and reducing the amount of runoff that's happening. It's not saying that they don't have to have stormwater management. They do have stormwater management on the site. They're gonna have to maintain those through an agreement. They didn't have to do any new stormwater management, because they're actually reducing the amount of runoff. But it is kinda confusing. You see the streambank erosion. It's really just about water quality and volume from stormwater coming out the site.
Would that be like more green area or more, or trees or whatever, so then stormwater will come into that versus it being majority of concrete, which is a better sort of appropriate kind of path?
Yeah, we want a lot of impervious.
We do. Yeah. Any reduction is a benefit to the city in the stormwater management. Yeah, and that would not be a waiver that we take lightly, so this one just made sense since they're actually improving the situation, which is not always the case for new development.
I'm gonna go off-topic a little bit. On this map here, the, the woods is not Chester. I'm kinda, what, what is the Chester boundary here?
It may be... It's almost, if there's a basin in here, it's like at the back of the basin here, or the, the runoff area, or stream, if you will.
Would that be Chester Township?
It, I believe it's Chester Township that wraps around on the other side. Yep.
If there is more development, most of the land isn't ours anyway, I guess is my point.
No, but in, in most of the redevelopment would occur on the parking lots, if anything. Some of that is unused, underutilized space.
Yeah, I was just looking at the open space.
Right.
Okay.
First, I have a question.
Sure.
Were we thinking about putting the police department there at one point? Is that something that...
Boy, that predates me. I...
There was characterization of that, but, you know.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I know they parked a car out there.
I'm gonna reshare you that.
They had a substation there. Yep, yep, yep.
Is it still unused? Because I know the sign is still there, and there's, police cars parked there often. Are y'all still use it? Okay.
So there is a substation there for right now.
I believe there is, yeah. Any other questions on Silvercare Housing, senior housing? All right, if you'll let me, I will move on to the next one, which is Liberty Housing Development Corporation, and their planned development to consolidate lots into one lot for a mixed-use development, which is really an office, and then six accessible and affordable residential dwelling units with off-street parking. So this is off Morton Avenue. It's in the C1R, where the star is. Here's some photographs. These are vacant lots now. They used to have a dense development in here on a... These lots are not very deep. They're very shallow, but it used to have two-story, side-by-side housing developments, or housing units, excuse me.
Right there?
Yes, yep. A long time ago, a long time ago. Yeah. It's vacant, been vacant for a while. Here's an image of the site plan. The office is on the west side. There's parking on the west. The east, and then the units are here. They're single units. They're one-story. And then there is an alley back here that is, in my mind, semi-public. Again, when we go through this, the, the fire marshal looks at this. The tree commission looks at, shade tree commission looks at it. City engineer looks at it. So there are some t's to cross and i's to dot as we get through this project, but for us in the planning commission, we do think this is another good project to, to reactivate these vacant lots.
I have another question.
Sure.
We know who Silvercare is, but who is deliberative?
They are a known entity. When they spoke in front of the planning commission, they have other developments, not in the City of Chester, but in Phil-, in the Philadelphia area, and they have experience in doing this type of development. Um, and they have experience in doing this type of development. Um, and they, going to the root of the past question is, will they serve residents from Chester? And that is what their intent is. That's why they'd like to come to Chester and serve residents of Chester. And these are people going through a transition, um, in their lives. They can be young or they can be old, or they just need something to move into, um, that has some assistance from them. And that's what the office is. That office will be manned twenty-four hours a day and there'll be somewhere, someone there to assist those residents, um, i- if needed.
Not, um, like on the, the west side, we had like a veterans' housing type of thing. Is that just, is the same thing?
Similar, but not better. Yes, um, it's, it's literally for people that have challenges. You know, all that road, roads are accessible. Um, they'll have any, like, serve that office will be, like you said, twenty-four hours a day to do anything that, you know, that they needed or have questions about or they need help with, that often will be someone that will be there twenty-four hours versus... I don't know if it's veterans, I think they just rent it to veterans that should have been disabled, but this is one where it's supervised, um, twenty-four hours a day.
And it's not exclusive to a certain population. It's kind of open to people that need this transitional housing.
I was gonna ask if it was, if it was along the side of transitional housing.
Well, and I, I should be hesitant to use the word transitional because we're gonna be using that later in future zoning amendments, but, but it's, it's actually long-term housing for these people. So it isn't they're gonna be here for six months. This, this may be a place where they're spending the rest of their lives for fifteen, twenty years. It's not intended to be, uh, you know, short-term.
And it will, I'm sorry.
No, I'm talking.
And it will be ADA?
It'll be all ADA accessible. I do have an image, this is an older image. It's part of the negotiation process with the planning commission was make this building look more fitting with the city and we asked them to use a brick facade for this housing. Um, there may be some roof changes that they, they had here, but just know that the building will have a brick facade on the frontage that's, uh, fronting Morton Ave. And just so you know too, this is also being referred to Sean and Eileen's place. Uh, so when you see it marketed and things like that, that's what they're referring to. It's Sean and Eileen's place versus eleven hundred Morton Ave, which actually won't even be the address of that place.
Will this address some of the homelessness that we have?
Not necessarily homelessness, no. It's more for people that just really need this extra support, not that homelesses don't, homeless people don't, uh, that are able to live on their own with minimal intervention, if you will.
With the spirit of collaboration and, you know, working with the city's image, has a conversation been had with Widener University in regards to this, um, I guess, new structure that potentially will be coming here in regards to location? Because right over the bridge is...
Is Widener.
Was Widener.
Right.
And in regards to collaboration, like, is there a conversation for the campus that, uh, students can do like volunteer hours here or was, there's no need for a new, I guess, facade such as this to come to Chester?
Yeah.
So close to a college campus and there isn't that direct line of conversation or communication where we can all work together as a community rather than...
Uh, that's a good question. I mean, I like the idea of like Widener, uh, students being able to assist with. There may be opportunities for that. We didn't get into that with the, the planning commission review of that. But that would be a good question to bring up at a planning commission meeting.
That's something that, as an elected official, I'm responsible for and that's fine as well, but that's just something that immediately came into my head when it comes to the, the location of this, you know, new development.
Right.
So close to a college campus.
It is. And it, they need to be a good neighbor and to us too, this is a, a good project because it's actually supporting other housing in that area and it, it fits.
And they didn't come, like, all of the other ones, they didn't have to come before the planning commission, like, several times, um, to present their idea and make questions and get feedback and that's why we like to encourage them to do a sketch plan. So if, in a way like if you, if you are available...
I remember they came before.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And that is very good, you know, very good, um, suggestion.
You guys have done visitations maybe to some of their other locations?
Not specific visitations, no, but we asked...
They've done a lot of visits.
Right. But we did ask the owner to, or the applicant to come and speak to their experience and they did provide some background information.
And, you know, we want them to, you know, we have people who come here and develop things and then it doesn't look well after a few years and there's no effort put into maintaining it, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. And that goes back to these agreements that we come up with that are pretty stringent as far, as far as maintenance goes and we also have that taken care of in our maintenance codes as well. But that goes back to what we also negotiate about street trees, you know, adequate sidewalks, uh, paving and all that. That goes into these projects to make sure they're complying and improving the city with these developments.
Um, with that being said, I'm gonna send you exactly what I'm referring to, Mr. Fritz.
Okay.
At Arsinus, he had his establishment just like this right across the campus and all the, um, organizations, softball team, football team, track, sorority. We all went over there, we cleaned, we assisted living.
Sure.
It was a little different, but we assisted the food, you know, the groceries.
Yeah.
Stuff like that. And it really helped unify the campus and the community, so we worked handi-
Oh yeah, that'd be great. I mean, I'd be happy to pass that on to the applicant too. Yeah. Okay.
A lady that came, um, that actually, I don't wanna say the word manages it, but she literally facilitates all of the, are in, um, Philadelphia. Um, very thorough, um, very knowledgeable and, you know, been changing, uh, open ground to facilities like this. And, um, the give-back part, um, she put up, made a presentation as well about the planning commission suggested, is this going to be for Chester residents? And they said, actually, we have a big need for it because Chester residents come to their sites and apply. And she was looking for land. That's what prompted them to work for land to come here, but I'm sure that she would answer. And one of the team with, um, just the people like Widener, um, they were, they were very interested in doing any kind of like, and looking for something else that they could, so.
Yeah. Yeah, please share that with me and I'll share with the client.
Yeah, so I saw this group do their presentation ironically at the Urgent Care Center, which we were talking about earlier. I think there's some connected tissue there, uh, particularly with funding. So, you know, what you're seeing here, especially the one on the, on the far left in the image is exactly the, the clientele they're set up for, mostly wheelchair-bound, independent but not totally independent.
Right.
That's why you don't see any steps. It's all one level. Uh, it, it's almost the same concept for seniors that Urgent Care is doing where it's a, a one-stop shop where you could live and get services nearby. This is of course a much smaller scale, but the people that will be living in these places, you know, will have twenty-four hour access to, you know, somebody to call at, at the end of the block there. So that's really good. My question for you guys though is, you know, generally when we do handicap parking and looking at the plans, there's a couple slots in the parking lot, but on the street itself, uh, are we gonna wait until the people move in or are we going to kind of mandate there's some handicap spots, maybe half that frontage?
So that's a, that's not our street, that is a state...
State road.
State road.
Morton Avenue? Okay.
So that's why we made the, they put, and put two side lines and once again, it is gonna be mostly visitors, um, because these are handicap, these are people that probably have to be able, but employees will be on that side and visitors and whoever comes from Urgent Care or, I mean, not Urgent Care, um, community transit and, um, get parked there and assist them, um, that way, but they, they won't be parking like she is.
Okay. And to, uh, Ms. Garner's point, the lady who represents this project is somebody we should all meet. She is a...
She's thorough.
Yeah, she's thorough and well-spoken, definitely.
Yeah, that's somebody we wanna meet.
The lady who worked at her and she's are, she's very present. That's her attitude.
So, you know, traffic on Morton Avenue is very difficult, you know? So are we looking at that too?
We, we are. We've asked them to, uh, do a number of things because it's, um, right now there's some illegal on-street parking occurring that makes it difficult entering and exiting this area, not just on Terrell and Johnson Street, but actually the streets that are further east, which their names are escaping me right now. But we've asked them to look at that situation too because some of the cars parked right next to the intersection, just like in two ninety-one, it's the same situation. You gotta sneak out to get out. We're asking them to, to, to work on, help us deal with that. So...
Is there a sign?
Yep. Exactly.
I have another question. Um, I do know that the homes were built there previously, right? So will there be a, a problem with the tie-in of that, uh, development?
That's a, that's an issue with basically all our development, new developments, is tying into Delkor and the water. The applicant is aware of that. They've, and all, we make all our applicants deal with Delkor directly and CWA and work on infrastructure connections because they're all tricky and have their own challenges. So yes, they've been in works with that to make sure that storm water, water connections, sewer connections are all correctly designed.
Someone has already come out or...
They're in the works of working that out. And that's part of the conditions that we put on these developments is that everything gets buttoned up with Delkor, everything gets buttons up with CWA to make these projects work. And they have to get final sign-off on that before the recording process takes place. Some instances, we have that done before it goes in front of you, but most instances it's after approval by the, the council.
Are they gonna be required to have storm water?
Yes. Yes. And most of it is infiltration under the parking lots, so it's underground storm water control. Yes. All right. All right. The last one, thank you for your patience, is another big and complicated project, but another good project, I believe, for the city. Uh, you may be familiar with this one, um, because currently there's some demolition occurring on the property. This is called seven forty-two West Front Street, but this project is actually off of West Second Street. And we'll be working with the applicant to change their address or reflects the West Second Street area. As noted, this is a reverse subdivision. It's turning fourteen lots into one lot and developing a fifty-seven thousand roughly square foot warehouse with an office area and off-street parking. Um, and power home remodeling is part of the applicant, um, for this project. It's in the LIC, so this is our light industrial zone. Here's some photos of the building that's, it was there, is now being cleaned up as far as the site goes. This is looking southwest, south to the east, if you will. Take note of West Front Street and how narrow it is. I'll come back to that in a minute. In the back, here's the site plan and here's the landscaping plan. And then lastly, I'll come to the plant, back to the plans, but here is the elevation drawings for the, the building. So it's a, it's a flat roof building, roughly two stories and, um, not like, not unlike many industrial warehouse buildings, um, that you see elsewhere. The good thing about this project is we, in the middle of the project, they actually had the trailer loading areas in the front facing West Second Street. We asked them to reverse the orientation of the building so the, the trailer loading docks were in the rear, which actually improves, um, access and egress by tractor-trailers. Otherwise, they would have been turning twice, if you will, to get on West Second Street. Um, and by reorienting the building, it's actually turned out to be, in our mind, a good project.
What type of impact is this gonna have on traffic?
That is something that they, this applicant did provide a traffic impact study. Um, in the end, as you know, West Second Street is a state highway or a state road. So they will have to meet all state requirements as far as egress and access goes. We're in the midst of working out as a condition to this, um, final approval, working with the state to make sure that access and egress, especially by the tractor-trailer trucks, is, is dealt with and understood by the state because the state is the owner of that road. Um, so that's something that's in the works. So that's a, it's a valid question. So in this instance, they did provide a traffic impact study.
Noise?
Noise.
You know, they will impact some of our city streets.
You, correct. Correct. Um, and that is one reason where we've actually had to negotiate with them to make sure they are doing the paving around the site in, in Curlin Street especially. So yes.
And what are they gonna warehouse there? Do we know?
Part of it is, I think, it, this is my understanding of it, it's almost gonna be, it's gonna be a training center for power home remodeling. So they'll actually probably do some interior, uh, inside the building, they'll be training their staff that works for home remodeling on how to, to do certain projects. So it'd be a warehouse slash training center. Can it, can be converted to wear us someday? Just like the other projects, this one had a couple waivers. I'm happy to answer any questions related to them if you, you have any, or I can go through them if you would like, um, or I can speak to this project more if you have some questions about it.
Uh, but they have this, uh, facility in Glen, uh, Glenhold and Falkroft? Is it Falkroft where they are now? Yeah. Little, yes. And where, is it Falkroft? Okay. So they're closing that down, opening this up. Basically, the mo-, most of the vehicles are their service vans that size, but occasionally they'll be bringing in the big trucks to drop off supplies.
Supplies.
But primarily, this is gonna be used as a training center. Was it sixty thousand square feet?
Just under fifty-seven. Yep.
So we're knocking down, they've knocked down the forty thousand square foot building to replace it with a sixty thousand square foot building, just to give you some idea that it's gonna be bigger than the, uh, old building, but lower. The other building was twice as high.
Right.
Yeah, that old, the one in the back, uh, you kinda see it.
Mm-hmm.
And parking lot was in the front and my eyesore, um, tractor-trailer come in and then they, and all this one in the front, along two ninety-one, which is better for you to, aesthetically, the job or, um, you know, this area versus seeing a warehouse away in the back and all these vehicles to come in and grease and all that stuff. They're like, they're not keeping back.
It, it, it's not much unlike our new public works facility in that, which is just a couple blocks to the west. It's gonna have the same thing where it's fronting West Second Street, but all the parking is in the interiors, which is gonna make that corridor a more appealing look with landscaping and the future greenway.
What I love is that because they're taking up that whole lot, they're going, you know, all the way to Curlin Street, which removes that tree company that was doing bonfires and whatever else they were doing over there, if you guys recall. So it's gonna be a nice-looking, much nicer block. Even the folks at the old Gins Bar is gonna like it as they look across the street.
Across the street. Right. Right.
So are we looking forward to this having a positive financial impact on our city's budget?
I believe so, if not just for taxes, but just activating an, an empty vacant parcel. I think there's a number of improvements that this is making. It's actually making two ninety-one or West Second Street more appealing and attractive for other future investment as well. So that's what, when something like this happens, I actually think it helps spur future development. Makes something like, oh, Chester is inviting this to happen or wants this to happen, we'd like to do the same. So that's what my hope is from something like this. And I would say the applicant feels the same way about that. They're pretty...
Yeah, he's, he's putting in a lot of money. I think the acquisition cost was a few million. He had to knock it down and the new building, I don't know what the cost is, but it's pretty substantial investment.
It's substantial, yeah. It's at least ten million dollars, at least.
Now, I know they already knocked the building down. They've already started working there. Um, so is there a reason this is coming after the, the work is already started?
Yeah.
Didn't they knock it down?
They did.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But they, they, they got all their permitting.
Oh, they already owned, okay.
Yeah, they already owned it, they knocked it down.
Yeah, and they already had all the permitting for that. Needed a zoning permit and then LNI needed to permit the demolition. So everything you're seeing is cleanup of and crunching all the debris from the demo.
Okay.
So there's no site work happening yet for that project.
And they still are, they're gonna own some parts that is in the parking lot, the building is already, so they haven't finished that, but they're like at that stage, at least, they've built them, um, with that transaction so that, uh, they're, they're not building anything, but they're not ready yet. yet. They still own everything before they even to build. They literally are just getting it ready.
Let's go back to the front street part, though, you alluded to and the challenge that you have with...
Yeah.
That's really a street.
Believe it or not, it's a street, but it looks like an alley. It really acts as an alley. It's not in good condition. Basically, the right-of-way that's there now is access or is influenced by the railroad that you can see in the image here to the right. But when this project is done, they'll have sidewalk, new curbing, and some partial repaving on West Front Street. So they'll improve the appearance of this, but it is really just an alley at this time. And they're not expanding out into West Front Street. But most of the, if not all, the traffic from this facility will be leaving Curlin Street or Yulrich Street. It won't be on West Front Street.
Is there some type of state regulation in regards to the distance of the train tracks and the curb that will be installed?
Uh, not necessarily, no. If there are anything, they're replacing the curb exactly where there is curb, which is barely there now. But it will make that back alley, if you will, improved, which is a good thing in my mind, even though you may not think it's always walkable back there. But in previous developments, including the public works facility, the marijuana dispensary, we've asked them to put sidewalks on West Front Street. So eventually, down the line, whether it's access to the stadium or other development on the east, you're going to have a sidewalk system along West Front Street, which I think is a good thing.
Is this a one-way?
I believe it's actually two-way now.
Two trucks can fit on that road?
No, no, no. And that's, that's just, it's like a historical case where the train tracks overtook the right-of-way. There must have been some kind of relationship that happened for that to happen. And it basically made West Front Street skinnier, if you will. Yeah, so...
Buried travel, which is not the same as going through your alley to the back of your house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the same width of your alley and everything, and people can come through those directions in an alley as well.
It's different throughout the city, the width of West Front Street. And here, it's super narrow. It's very narrow in this section.
But you said the trucks will be in the back off, coming off of Front Street?
No, they won't be. They'll use, if you can follow my cursor here, they're going to use Yulrich Street or Curlin Street. There's entrances and exits right here. West Front Street is below this new curbing and sidewalk right here.
But we still have residential down there where they'll be gaining access off of Curlin Street?
Two homes.
Yeah, to the immediate east, there's like two homes, exactly. Yes, yes. But they'll have a new paved street for Curlin Street. Yep.
And what about safety features? Are there any safety features, even though it's two homes down there? They may have children. And so are there any safety features put in place?
Well, if anything, it's cleaning up the street. It'll be a major improvement from what is there now.
Are you...
Just the homes that exist there.
The homes that are there. And then, you know, if there, if it's an open lot or open space, a child can go into that open space and cross the tracks. So I'm asking, are there any safety features?
It wasn't out there.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're not including the tracks. The tracks are in the public area. And just like the public works facility, this will be entirely fenced in, if that's what you're asking about access to the site. So they'll have security fencing around the entire site. Other than just improving the public street on Curlin Street, there are no, like, public safety improvements being proposed, other than making sure the sidewalks that connect across Curlin and Yulrich Street actually have ADA accessible pavers and things like that. So the walk through the site will be safe and usable.
So to be Curlin and Yulrich on the other side of 291?
Just on the south side of 291.
Yeah.
Yeah, only, right, one block. Yep.
Because above that, there are res...
There are, yes, yes. Yep, yep.
Getting back to your point, council lady, those, those, those two homes that live right there?
Mm-hmm.
Have suffered with years of trees being burned right across Curlin Street. Right now is a tree service company. And, and they would call and just say, should they be burning? It's amazing that embers haven't flown across the street and set them off.
Wow.
Huge fires.
So is that company still there?
No.
No?
Or are they still there?
Are they still burning trees?
No, that's all gone.
I don't believe so.
No, that's all been cleared out. So now, across the street, they'll have a row of trees and a parking lot.
If you have any other questions, let me know. But I hope this is worthwhile to you. I mean, I lied to Tom because I would take, I told him it'd take 10 minutes and it didn't take that long.
Obviously.
We have questions.
Yeah. But again, I would encourage you to come to the planning commission meetings. You've asked valid questions and I would happy, you know, if you have these questions or see something on the agenda for the planning commission, you can always email me and say, can you ask this question about this project? But right now, we're close to the finish line on these. I do believe all of these are good projects. I wouldn't tell you otherwise if they weren't. But I do feel like it's good to give you some background, especially because there's more in-depth information on these resolutions and in the attachments, which I hope you also read. So again, always ask me questions or, Kim, if you have any.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
We got one, two, three, four, five other resolutions on the first page. The only question I have is on R89, the handicap number five. How do you pronounce that street?
Walkman.
I wrote location, where is that?
That's where I...
How do you pronounce it?
Walkman, that's what I say.
I think it's one of those things that are pronounced by different people in different parts of the city. Now, I was just listening to the attorneys, the solicitors' pronunciation.
It's number five.
Headed to Walmart before you get to where the car wash area is, like that very late street. Yeah. It's a basketball, the basketball court, they used to have tournaments and stuff down there, right across the street from Walkman.
Is that in that circle? Like this, in Sun Village?
It's off the circle.
Oh, it's off the circle, okay.
Yeah.
How do the police pronounce it?
Walkman.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask, about 90.
Was the purpose of the freeze or was...
Yes.
Going on that?
Resolution 90?
Yes, sir.
One of, one of the owners who was approved for the facade improvement program has decided he did not want to participate. So we are, we are amending the contract with LSN Contractors to reflect the fact that those two storefronts will not be part of this contract.
So they won't be uniform with everybody else?
Each storefront is unique anyway, so they weren't looking to standardize all of those. And they weren't adjacent to any of the other storefronts that were approved for the facade improvement program. It's just unfortunate that they chose after the contract was awarded to withdraw their participation in the program.
Did they list the reason why?
They did.
And how does their storefront look?
We want to know too.
Are they going to, is it going to be up to par in terms of appearance? Because we're trying to do something with downtown area, you know, to make it look nicer, you know?
Yeah, I think, I think the architect is looking at, at each of the storefronts for those who have participated and those who were selected to kind of take the unique features that some of those storefronts have and to make improvements based on that. We're not trying to standardize and make every single property look the same. So it's just unfortunate in this case because that's, that's two storefronts that we were contributing nearly 100,000. They chose not to participate.
Maybe not the same, but we want it to look nice.
Correct.
Sorry, I can't see, can you see my back?
Uh...
Wait till later.
Yeah, we'll wait till later. I don't want to, we'll wait.
Ask the mayor. I had the conversation with him, but let's do it offline.
Yeah, I want to do that offline.
Have we identified two other locations that can possibly take this funding?
The problem is that we went through a bid process, so there was a scope of work that was defined. The scope of work was put out for bid, went through an RFP process. It was awarded based on those five storefronts. Now we're, you know, I think you would be hard-pressed to find a way to replace something because then that, I think, would endanger the procurement process. We put a bid package out together. They wanted to participate as part of that bid process. Subsequent to the award, they chose not to. So now we're reducing the award, the award amount. I don't think we could just randomly add two other properties into, into the scope of work.
Now, are we held liable since we already approved this and with the contractor?
We've had conversations with the contractors and we asked them point-blank, is this, you know, are you okay moving forward if we reduce these two storefronts or remove this out of the contract? He's, he's fine with that. He would have liked to have done the other two, but he's, he's okay doing the remaining three.
Okay.
Now, how does that work with the funds that we already secured for that specific, for those specific two developments?
This is all part of the overall, this is ARPA money, so this is all part of the overall ARPA, ARPA projects.
So now what happens to the 95,000 of ARPA dollars? Are we going to allocate it for something else or...
Probably the Public Works Building.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
There's not individual pockets for each of those, all of those projects that, okay, if you dedicated X amount to this project, you have to spend X amount to that project. As long as you had a memorandum of, memorandum of understanding, you can, you can move those, those pots of money around, as long as it's something that was approved as part of the, the ARPA budget.
Okay.
It is.
Yes.
93, resolution 93?
Yes.
Can you tell me a little bit about that?
On Thursday, the Health Department will be finalizing a bidding to hide up to a $4.4 million grant for renovation from the city. It'll leverage the William Heng Grant. So we're starting to get critical mass in funding for that issue.
Do, do we have a grant writer?
We do.
We have the company that's been asked about.
Okay. Right, I know Asia left, so that was my concern. Do we have a grant writer?
She wasn't a grant writer.
Yeah.
Oh.
Last week.
Well, wasn't she acting in the place of a grant writer or getting certain grants or something?
Managed grants.
She, she was more managing the grants. You have, you have a contract with BRS Inc. to actually do grant writing and that's who's taking the lead on this project.
We've always had someone in that capacity that would just manage and just let us know when we're not meeting the criteria of the grant. They made sure that we did what we were supposed to do.
The easy part is often getting the grant. The hard part is managing the grant once you actually have it. That's why the contracts are this thick and have a whole bunch of stipulations attached to it. But managing that process, the reporting process, that's where the real work starts.
Any other questions from council? How about out there? Any questions? Directors?
I do have a question for Mr. Alexander after the meeting.
Okay.
Can I have a question for the Fire Department as well as the LNI Department? I guess after, it can wait till after.
Everybody's saying, ooh.
Trouble.
How about the public?
Talking big.
No, we're all good? All right.
And the rest of the...
Yes.
But I don't think it fits the scope of all of this, where the meeting office...
Ooh. All right, very good. Thanks for coming. Okay. We get very little public at these meetings and it's, it's a public meeting. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some...
Meeting adjourned.